All right, thank you for coming to tonight's Planning Commission this May 23rd, 2024. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Nelson and the opening remarks by Commissioner Phillips.
Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful for the opportunity we have to be here representing our city and serving the members of our community. We're grateful for the items we have to consider and pray that we can be thoughtful and respectful as we listen to the requests of our citizens and look for ways to continue to improve this great city. We ask this name Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. All right, if everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda, I'll take a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that agenda passes by Commissioner Redding and a second by Commissioner Marknow. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the staff reports.
I move we approve tonight's staff reports as written with the one correction of the name correction in the one entry there.
To item four.
To item four, correct.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Marknow to approve those with those changes and a second by Commissioner Butler. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes as well. Are there any declaration of conflicts and abstentions from Commissioner members? All right, not seeing any, we will proceed to item number one, which is a public hearing to consider the request of St. John Properties for a site plan for a commercial building located in approximately 2067 West Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone Interchange Sub District, and this is administrative item.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Planning Department. So these first two items on the agenda will be heard together. These are two commercial site plans located on the large development area by the freeway. Besides the hotel, that was heard last time. These are the second and third installments of retail space for this overall development area. And these two buildings provide an additional 15,000 square feet of commercial space. Here's the zoning of the property. As you can see, this property is in the Grove Interchange Sub District and also has the Valley Grove Mixed Use Overlay, which outlines additional permitted uses and different setbacks than what is typically required in the Grove Zone. This overall area also has a development agreement that provides further design guidelines and requirements for this particular area, which we'll get into as we look at the next few images. So here's the site plan. So access to these two properties will be from Valley Grove Way, which is from the north. Here we go, that's better. So Valley Grove Way is right up here, and this is Pleasant Grove Boulevard. So access will not be from Pleasant Grove Boulevard, but through Valley Grove Way and through other private roads and drive aisles throughout the development. Both of these buildings are intended for retail uses, which require a total of 76 parking spaces, and 86 spaces are provided between these two properties. You can also see a crosswalk here. And this crosswalk is part of the overall walkability design of the whole development. As you can see, this crosswalk extends a little bit further to the east to other future commercial lots. One of the requirements of the crosswalks per the development agreement is that these crosswalks will need to be delineated by either pavers, a change in texture, or raised crosswalks. Staff is still working with the applicant on that particular requirement. However, any necessary changes to that will be made before being taken to City Council. As for the landscaping and open space requirements, a combined total of 12.7% of open space seen here in green is provided for both of these lots, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 10%. 20 trees have also been provided within the boundaries of both of these lots. However, none of them are evergreen. The applicant has requested and the Design Review Board has also recommended approval of having no evergreen trees for this development, as the water table is too high for them to survive. And then here is what both of the buildings will look like. The north elevation here is what the view will be from Pleasant Grove Boulevard, albeit kind of from an angle, because Pleasant Grove Boulevard goes up for the overpass. And then this side is the side that faces the lot. Retail N is approximately 29 feet tall at its highest point, and Retail O is about 34 feet at its highest point. As you can see, both these similar, both these buildings have similar building materials. And here's also one of those differences between the base zoning requirements and the development agreement. The Grove Zone typically only permits stucco, ephes, metal, or untreated concrete block as an accent or secondary material. However, the development agreement does grant a little bit more flexibility in the materials so long as those materials are durable and approved by the Design Review Board. And the Design Review Board did approve these plans. But some of those changes, kind of as you can, or the building materials as proposed, most of them will be, or the primary building material will be the metal here, and also they'll have CMU. So if we kind of go back, all of these darker portions right here, kind of in the middle of all the buildings, that's going to be those metal panels. And then these lighter areas right here and here and over here will be CMU. But overall, staff recommends approval of both of these items with the condition that all planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met, and I can take any questions.
How does this fit into the overall plan that we saw a little while ago?
Yeah, so these are just the first two retail spaces that are coming in. We had the hotel over here, and then as we move forward through the rest of the overall plan for this, well, there'll be like a promenade area here and a couple other commercial buildings, and then like a parking garage here. So these are kind of the very first installments of this whole thing.
Why are they starting with those two?
Great question. I'll let the applicant answer that if they have an answer.
Probably because they're on the outside edge, and when they turn those over to the public, then they can have public access. You have construction in the way.
And they have to have so much retail before they can build the parks. All right, any other questions for Jacob?
Was there any concern from the city because the, some of the plans that were originally shared had that area right there as kind of a parking garage structure, if I remember right, with retail associated with that? So it, like, that whole area?
Yeah, so the parking garage is intended to go in just south of these two properties right there. And the way how the development as a whole will go is each lot will provide as much parking as they can for the uses for that lot themselves. But as soon as they start running out of room for the parking that's necessary for those uses, then they'll start installing the parking garage, so that way we can have all the parking that we need for all of this. So it'll kind of be a step-by-step process essentially through the whole way, but...
I understand that, and I'm not a builder. I'm just curious, because, you know, if we want to maximize the retail space that is there, you know, in my mind, it's like, okay, we're taking away from retail by having those parking spots needed for each one of those retail. And then, oh, here we go, last and last, but not least, there's the parking garage to make up the difference. So in my mind, just, that's just kind of curious for me, to me.
I got you, I understand, yeah.
Thank you, Jacob. All right, if the applicant is here, you're welcome to come forward and just remember to state your name.
Hi, I'm Matt Balar with St. John Properties.
You don't look all like Marty.
Not quite as tall as Marty now. So we're intending, this is the first piece of our Valley Grove six phase, and we're intending to bring in two retail buildings, as Jacob has discussed with you guys. The two buildings are going to be located next door to each other and share a few parking stalls, and they will be the first two pieces of a larger, obviously a larger planned concept that we have going on.
And I'm sure you planned for it, but that accommodates for the widening of the freeway access and all of those things?
Yep, yep. So the, everything that we're putting in there is for the future plans of UDOT and...
I was sure about that, I just had to ask.
But absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing, and so if anyone would like to come forward for items number one or two, please come forward. All right, we will, not seeing anybody, we will close the public hearing and bring it up to the commissioners for discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion for Retail N. I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for a retail building located approximately 2093 West Pleasant Grove Boulevard on property zone The Grove Interchange Sub District. And adopting the exhibits conditions and findings of the staff report and is modified by the condition that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
I'll second. Go ahead.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Fugel to approve Retail N and a second from Commissioner Phillips. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes.
I'll make a motion for Retail O as well. I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for a retail building located approximately 2067 West Pleasant Grove Boulevard on property zone The Grove Interchange Sub District and adopting the exhibits conditions and findings of the staff report and is modified by the condition that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve Retail O from Commissioner Fugel and a second from Commissioner Redding. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes as well. So we'll go to item number three, which is a public meeting to consider the administrative request of Scott Dent for one lot preliminary residential subdivision plat called Makin Dreams Plat B on .52 acres located at 1408 North 670 West in the R110 Single Family Zone.
All right, thank you. So the second item is a one lot subdivision for Scott Dent. The previous subdivision for these properties called Makin Dreams Plat A was recorded with Utah County on June 30th, 2022. These two lots were lots 29 and 30, 29 and 30 respectively, and each one was greater than 10,000 square feet in size. So this is the aerial image of the property, and here is the zoning map. This zone is the R110 Sub District, which requires 10,000 square feet per lot. The applicant is requesting to combine these two parcels together, and this new subdivision, once combined, will be approximately 22,600 square feet in size, which is well above the minimum zoning requirements for this zone. Beyond that, the building envelope. Here we go. So beyond that, the building envelope meets the minimum setback requirements, and they will be releasing the existing public utility easement that's here. It's a little hard to see. But here in the middle, and staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary subdivision, and I can take any questions.
I'm not clear what they're doing here. They're just combining two...
They're just combining their lots, that's it.
And then just going to build one house on one lot?
I would assume so, yeah.
Somebody bought both lots and they want to build one house.
All right, any other questions for Jacob? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if the applicant's here and you want to come forward, you're more than welcome to. Okay, then, because this is a public meeting, we're just going to bring it back up to the commissioners for discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion. I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Scott Dent for a subdivision plat called Makin Dreams Plat B on property located approximately 1418 North, 1408 North, 6701 West, 670 West? Yes, 670 West on property zone R110 and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report and as modified by that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met. Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Butler and a second from Commissioner Fugel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Onto public hearing, item number four. To consider the request of Will Clark to amend City Code Section 10-12A-3, Design Controls in the Business Manufacturing Park to permit outdoor storage for retail uses in the Business Manufacturing Park Zone. Daniel, you're up.
All right, Chair Commissioners, thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It's always nice to have a full house. Thank you so much. Sometimes I'm pretty sure, I'm going to say 80, no, I'm going to say 90% of the population don't know what the Planning Commission do. But those who know, believe me, you guys, we're very grateful of what you guys do, for your time, for your energy, for the resources that you put into this, for the time that you spend to study, and for your, for the heat that you take sometimes when you make decisions. So thank you so much for all of that. Chair Commissioners, what we have in front of us is a co-text amendment, okay? It's a co-text amendment for this zone right here, the BMP, the Business Manufacturing Park Zone, okay? What we have in Pleasant Grove, and I say this many times, is that Pleasant Grove, because of our borders, we don't have an area where to expand our manufacturing zones. Most cities, most cities will be like, you know what, let's keep it cool on the east side of the freeway and throw everything on the west side, right? And we can see the way cities were designed based on that. In Pleasant Grove, we don't have the luxury, because we don't have a west side of the freeway. So our manufacturing zone is what I'm going to put right here, actually, I'm going to do it with my mouse, is this area right here. Is this gray area, and includes this green area right here. The green area is our Business Manufacturing Park Zone. So it's manufacturing, but not as intense as the MD, the manufacturing distribution. And even if you see an aerial view, I mean, you guys can see what a manufacturing zone looks like, and you guys can see what a Business Manufacturing Park Zone looks like. Completely different, even though both are manufacturing, one is more, when you guys drive on Samway Lane, you guys can see, turn to the right and see Close to My Heart, and then you guys keep going, see Public Works, look at your right and see what you, and then find the difference, correct? So we don't have a lot of design standards for the manufacturing distribution zone. We don't. It's not free-for-all, but I like to call that zone kind of like the free-for-all. That's what we have garbage disposals. That's what we manufacture metal. That's what we mess with wood. That's what we do, all this type of stuff. And the Business Manufacturing Park, that's what we have a lot of flex spaces right there. A lot of the uses are indoors, right here. If not, all of the uses are indoor. The uses right here, as we can see, totally outdoor, okay? And that's a very good point of comparison between these two zones. In one, there's outside storage. In the other one, there's not outside storage. This is the difference. Again, we can take a look at this. Outside storage. Outside storage. This is, there's outside storage. Here, and you know what, we don't have the most current buildings, but that's why I have this amazing map right here, where we can see. There you go. There, give me, I'll be there, I'll be there. There we go. Nice, here we go. Business, sorry. Outside storage, not outside storage. If I tell you, find the five differences, you guys can easily find five differences between this and this, okay? So again, why is not right here? The reason why is because we have a buffer. That's our buffer between, or what I like to call the crown of the jewel of Pleasant Grove, which is our, the Grove, the Grove Zone, and then this manufacturing distribution zone. So we have something right there, okay? So probably about, I don't know, eight years ago, I would say, we amended the situations, we amended the code regarding the Business Park Zone, and we include some design controls, okay? Part of those design controls, it was done in 2017. It was one year after I started. I take credit for that one. The good and the bad. Also for whatever came out of bad from that one, it was me too. So if you guys can see, 1012A3, I have some outdoor merchandise displays, because some of that was required by previous developers, right? I'm saying, hey, how about, let's talk about, how about somebody selling a, have a tractor company, or someone is selling RVs, or someone is doing something like that, how are we going to accommodate it? Or we're selling, I remember one company wanted to sell farming machines and stuff like that. And they said, well, let's lose to some, and the answer from the staff was like, well, let's store them inside. Store them inside. But some outdoor will be allowed, and what we did is to say, what I said around that time is, the maximum area designated for the storage of display products, so we say "display only," okay? Shall not exceed 25%. And why do we do it like that? I did it like that because it said you already made an effort to create a building with a storage inside, but let's allow, the bigger, the more effort you make for the building, the bigger your area is going to be for outside display, okay? So we cap it at 25% of the size of the building, of the size of the building. So if we go back to this image right here, okay, and let's, let's think, let's imagine, we know this is Close to My Heart, but let's imagine that this is not Close to My Heart, okay? And let's say that this is any other company. You guys choose your company in your head. And then what we say is like, they still can have some outdoor storage, but it will be 25% of the square foot of the building. So the building goes right here and then right here. So what we'll do, we'll measure the square footage of the building, find the 25%, which is a quarter of it, and then that's the area that they could have right here, a little bit of outside storage. That's how it's designed right now, okay? What the applicant is proposing right now is to take that away and say, well, we have a company, and of course, usually, most of co-text amendments don't come because they want to change the entire city, but they come because there's a specific project that they want to. But it's important that we don't just think about that specific project, but we think, how will that be applied to the entire zone? So what the applicant is saying, hey, you know what, I think it's time to allow for some outside storage. We're going to do in an orderly manner, okay? But what's orderly manner for me is differently orderly manner for my 13-year-old daughter, okay? So that's pretty subjective. What orderly manner is, is pretty subjective. So what we say is, with the applicant, let's sit down and let's establish what does orderly manner means. Let's come out with some regulations, and that's what the proposal is that is in front of you guys. So let me pull it out, right here, that portion of the code. And I'm going to do this, so we can go back and forth. Right there, okay? Again, what it says right now, right now says that the maximum they can have for outdoor storage is 25% of the size of the building. All the merchandise for displays should be behind an enclosed area. That 25% is still needed to be an enclosed area attached to the main building, okay? So we have some regulations right there. Now I'm going to show you what the applicant is proposing. There you go, all right? So what the applicant is proposing, and again, this is language that the applicant proposed, that staff already digested, worked with them, and we come out, this is kind of like something where both staff and applicant feel comfortable, okay? Outdoor storage and designated outdoor storage areas. The storage of materials in any designated outdoor storage area should be secondary and subordinated to the permitted retail use. That was really important for staff. Why? Because I need, we needed to make sure, we needed to make sure as the staff that outdoor storage was going to be associated with retail uses only. If there's no retail uses, then there's no storage allowed, okay? So that's why we put that right there. And it should be, the outdoor storage area should be secondary and subordinated to a main retail use. So we put some breaks right there, all right? The maximum area designated for outdoor storage shall not exceed 25% of the lot area. That's something to keep into consideration. Because if the lot area is four acres, that means that they can have one acre of outdoor storage, okay? Number two, all of the storage materials should be contained within a designated outdoor storage area that is attached to or nearby the main building, and such outdoor storage area should be enclosed by a masonry wall, not just a white vinyl wall. A masonry wall that meets the design standards of the Grove Zone and that is not less than 10 feet in height. So if I'm six feet, imagine four feet more. That's how tall we are thinking we need a wall. Keep in mind, it's a manufacturing zone, so there's materials and the type of, yes, materials that will be a storage probably are taller than me. So what we're trying to do is to keep everything behind a masonry wall. The storage materials cannot exceed the height of the enclosing wall. So I cannot have an 11-foot stack of materials right there. So what we're trying to do is, when you're driving on the freeway, what you're going to see is going to be the wall, and you're not going to see things popping out right there that could be construction materials, it could be anything else. So what we're trying to do is to keep the plane right there. We include that because when I send my code, my code enforcement, she can say, hey, it's exceeding. It's simple. It's objective, not subjective, okay? Any gates to the designated outdoor storage area should be screened with opaque materials. I've seen this one. They put a small, small wall, and then the rest of it is like chicken wire, and they said, this is my gate. No, no, no. Even if it's a gate, it needs to be opaque materials. Okay, that's important for us to put that right there. I've been crossed before, as you guys can see that. The designated outdoor storage area should be located in an enclosed side yard or backyard area of a lot or parcel of land, meaning that no storage area should be located on the front yard. That was important for the designs. This is another one. A landscape buffer of not less than 10 feet. So there's going to be a landscape buffer. Measure from the property line, including a sufficient number of mature trees to the extent feasible, shows around the designated outdoor storage areas on all sides, not directly attached to or nearby the main building. Such trees should be three inch, and then we decide how the trees are going to be right there. And finally, any laid-down areas within the designated outdoor storage area should be improved with asphalt or concrete. So we don't want... So we don't want, for example, compacted gravel that ends up all right there, okay? So that's all those design standards is what we work together and trying to figure out. I think it's important to mention that our neighbors, our dear neighbors, and lately I've been having the opportunity to work a lot with them of Linden, their planning, like their Grove Zone is adjacent to that, is adjacent to that. So keep in mind that we're trying, or we're trying to get the best design rules, or the best design standards to keep the area clean, to keep the area appropriate for the zone, is, is, is a good effort that the city is doing to be good neighbors with their city of Linden, okay? Let me go back to the aerial map, and you guys can take a look at it. Here we go, that's what I'm saying. This is our BMP area, and this is a big, important area for the city of Linden. And it's not that we're just planning for them, but I think it's also we're planning because this is our Grove Zone, this is our manufacturing, and we need that buffer right there. There's some residential right here as well. So we consider that all these design standards will help us, will help us out. I think that is, the code as it is written, the staff feels comfortable with it, with, and, and exception that probably with, if the applicant is here, and when the applicant comes here, we can discuss it. When we talk about a limit of percentage, I would like to also put a limit, a limit on area. Whether it's an acre and a half, we can say 25% of the lot area, or an acre and a half, whichever is less. So that's something to, to keep in mind. That'll be the only thing that I will add to it, based on, when sometimes when I kind of sleep Sunday nights, I think about what I'm gonna do in my next planning commission. So that's something to keep into consideration, and that's just another break that I, just to, for, for the comfort. Again, because if we're talking about a property that is 10, 10 acres, then we're saying, storage area can be two and a half, which is a little, a little, probably a little too much. So I think in the conversation with the applicant, we say 25, that came from them. And say, okay, what's also the maximum that you guys feel comfortable, or the minimum that you guys feel comfortable, okay? That's what I have commissioners and, and chair, if you guys have any questions before I sit down. I'm good for, ready.
Can you, can you go to the other aerial map that has the two industrial buildings that are?
Pardon?
The map that has the two, shows the two industrial buildings.
That one?
Yeah, so with the side, the side yard or backyard for this building right here, these two, this is obviously the frontage, so that's the front side. This building, this side is technically the front of the building, so the storage area would be between those two, is that correct? Is that how I understand it?
I mean, you know, I haven't even thought about that, but we, it, it, no, 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 no. The frontage of this one is, is right here.
That's the front, that's considered the frontage there.
Correct.
Even though the access, the front access to the building is right here.
Frontage of, of a parcel is always where there's the, the, the access, the, the public, the public access to it.
Just wanted to clarify that, and so the back, backyard on this building would be this area, right?
Yeah, the access to this building is to right here, so this is gonna be kind of, this is a funky one.
Yeah, because there's access here too.
Yeah, but that's not a public access, I don't think that's a public access. Yeah, the public access goes to right here, yeah.
Okay, so the storage for this building would be over here.
Correct. Maybe right here a little bit as well.
Yeah.
Okay. This is a funky one, but yeah.
Okay, so this is the side yard for this building.
There will be the backyard.
And back.
I think when the applicant comes, they're trying to do that on a, it does apply to them, it does apply to it. But I think it will be hard to come up with, for example, with a 10-foot landscape buffer, then they won't have much storage. I think they're planning it more for a project, a project somewhere right there, yes, that's what I think it is. But it does apply to this, it will be applied to this, and it also will apply to these guys right there. So it will be applied for the entire zone, correct?
Okay, thank you.
No, that's a great thing to bring into consideration, yes, it will apply for the entire zone.
Can you go, can you go back to the current code?
Yes, sir.
Please. So if A through, A through G is meant to be unchanged, right? Do we see any conflict with the code amendment coming in today and this language here?
No. This one is for the utilities, this is for the mechanical equipment.
Right, but D there, where we talk about.
All of this is what's gonna be removed.
So it's gonna be replaced by the, the, if we vote for it.
So, okay, because in your, in the proposed text amendment,
Yes.
It says A through G to remain unchanged.
Got it.
But it's A, B, C,
Yes.
E, F, G are remaining unchanged.
I will, you know what, I will leave it like.
We're deleting D and adding H.
Sorry, there you go, just like that.
But, but just to make sure, we're deleting D.
We're deleting D.
And adding H.
Correct. We're deleting the, actually, what I will do.
D point one.
There you go.
I like that better.
Thank you.
Okay, that makes more sense.
No, thank you, that will be. I'm actually gonna save it, so I wanna.
Have some other questions?
Yes.
How are you gonna determine nearby?
That's a good, that's a good question. I think they got the idea from, we're talking about this one right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, does that mean against?
I think nearby or attached, and that's from the applicant, we can ask them, I feel comfortable just saying attached.
So, and, and my, my thinking there is, if you send a co-enforcement officer out there, and somebody's putting their storage area, they say it's nearby, it's 30 feet away from their main building.
That's, that's great, that's great.
Technically nearby, but maybe not to everybody, there's, I'm just wondering how the city would plan to enforce that.
I will do something like this, and I'm so glad we're doing this in the weekend. Like this.
Attached to the main building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then on the gate, we wouldn't be opposed to a solid gate either, would we?
Instead of opaque?
Solid or opaque.
Solid.
And, and I get what you're saying, if they put a wire gate up there, and then it's completely see-through, but if they.
Should be screened with solid, solid and, yeah.
Cause right now we're saying they can only have an opaque.
The thing, so when I say opaque materials is because, and, and you're right, but I've seen these, these doors that go like that, and then they had like slats going through it.
Yeah, which is, which is great.
That will make it opaque.
But I just want to make sure we're not eliminating the possibility of a solid gate either.
But I love the idea, I think that's, that's important to communicate it with the, with the applicant, yes.
Solid or?
Okay, and I'm putting it in yellow because these are the things that we're discussing right now that we haven't talked to the applicant yet. Hey, how do you guys feel about the number one and the extra break that I mentioned about? I think we can discuss that with the, when the applicant comes in.
What are the sizes of the lots there? So you, you mentioned four acres in your example.
Well, we have one that is five, almost six acres. We have another one that is two acres. We have one right here that is
12.
12 and a half acres. And that one that is four and a half acres, wink, wink. Cause that's the one that is no, this, this, this tree, those are the three that I will say, and this one as well, yes. This one belongs to the city.
And that one's protected, right?
Sorry, pardon?
That, that parcel right there.
Yeah, we're gonna use that for, for some type of detention. Does that answer your question, like?
Uh huh, yeah, so looking at a three-acre storage.
Yeah, the, the biggest lot is five acres, so you could have.
Well, there's the 12, the close to my heart is on.
They've already got buildings that lot of that too.
Almost six, yeah. Six and about 12 and a half, yeah. Those are the things that I consider that can be, that can be changed, uses.
See, 12% of six.
12% of six.
25%?
Five. It's one and a half.
It's like math's not my strong point.
Yeah, it's still one and a half. So realistically, one and a half is about as big as you're gonna get. And it still have to be in an enclosed area, and it still have to be behind, yeah.
I mean.
Be right in front of the school.
I mean, it, it's, it's just a, an idea, I, 25% is what we have. We, we never, I think this cannot be consolidated. I mean, this, the city owns this one, this is the only one that is empty, and then you got that one. I mean, it's something that we can discuss, so we feel comfortable with 25%, that's, that's, that's how it's proposed at this point.
But you said of putting in there 25% with a max of?
I'm saying, just do a percentage, and also do a, a maximum area. As we do it in other, in other portions of the code, if we feel comfortable, that's an idea from staff.
So for example, so on this one, if it were one and a half acres, can we measure out one and a half acres off of that?
Ah, yes, I'll do it right now.
Just as an example.
Just to give you guys an idea, okay?
And while you're doing that, I, I still don't see what we're gaining by putting a max on it, and all the other conditions that are there.
That's my point, if it's gonna be enclosed by a wall and behind the building, and the wall's gotta be high enough.
And attached to the building and everything else, like.
I mean, from easements and the footprint of where the building is, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't. And so I'd.
Something about right there.
Oh, so lucky, nice, well done, well done.
I do this for a living, that's why I keep doing.
You are a pro.
That's great.
I don't think we need to put a maximum on it.
I don't think so either, nothing, nothing's gonna.
I would suggest that we allow the applicant to present, then we discuss it, and then we make the final determinations on it. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, if the applicant is here, you're welcome to come up, just remember to state your name in the microphone.
Thank you, Daniel, my name is Will Clark, I'm here representing Dakota Pacific on this code change request to add limited outdoor storage for our East 15 Lot 5, which is just southwest of the two large industrial buildings that was shown on the map earlier. We're working on a project with Vinyl Industries, who's here with me tonight. They're currently located in Lehigh and are excited to have a project come to this area of Pleasant Grove. So I understand the sensitivity with this lot being so adjacent to the Grove Zone, which is why we've proposed what I think are fairly limiting design controls, which not only limit any detrimental impact that will be had to the Grove Zone, but we think it actually enhances the curb appeal and imagery of this lot in order for outdoor storage to be considered and approved use compared to some other uses that are currently by right approved within the business manufacturing zone. So as Daniel mentioned, this code text amendment will apply to all projects within the BMP zone, but we think that that's gonna have a fairly limited impact, just considering there's only eight parcels within that zone, we own three of them. So we feel like the, the impact for that, especially considering some of these fairly costly design controls, is not really gonna affect the area to a very substantial degree. As Daniel showed on the map, there's only two other vacant available lots in the Grove, in the business manufacturing zone, both of which are, you know, further to the east, located near the manufacturing zone, which already has outdoor storage as a permitted use in a much, much less stringent fashion than what we're asking for here. So just a little bit of history on sort of why we're asking for this code text amendment. Vinyl Industries is a vinyl fence contractor and distributor who, like I said, is located in Lehigh, and they have a requirement to be able to store materials outside of their primary building area in order to really be able to make sense of this project moving forward, which leads me to comment on number two, the edit that we made here live. I don't know if, I, I understand the ambiguity with the, with the nearby language, and I think we could probably come up with something to clarify that. But I'm not sure attached to, on this site plan that we've contemplated with this code text amendment is gonna be possible. Basically, if we could pull up maybe the map, the aerial map with the two industrial buildings on it, that'd be helpful. So we're talking about this building which Daniel's already drawn on, or this lot which Daniel's already drawn on. We're, we're a bit limited here by what we can do, just because of the abnormal shape of the lot. Typically, on a flex type use, we'd be looking to, you know, maximize the building's efficiency. The building square foot divided by the lot area at about 40%, which is about what our two large buildings are at. However, with this site, just the way that the new road sort of cuts it off, I think we're, we're looking at like a 35,000 square foot building, which is like a 12% efficiency. So I'm not sure putting, or limiting the outdoor storage area to attach to the building is gonna be in our or the city's best interest, because one, the building is so small, it's gonna be very hard to attach it to an outdoor storage use with truck docks and things like that, needing to take place immediately on the backside of the building. Second of all, the outdoor storage area that we're contemplating is sort of in that northeast corner, which Daniel has kind of drawn on, and we think that that's a good place for it because it's partially screened by our 200,000 square foot building B. It's sort of out of the way of close to my heart.
Sorry, could you use the, the pen to point?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So roughly in this area, and it's also sort of screened by this city-owned detention area. So we think this is probably the most appropriate location for that outdoor storage, because it's also gonna be right next to the 10-foot tall wall, as well as being surrounded by a fairly substantial landscape buffer. So I know that's a lot, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
So if we're talking about this area right there, the landscape buffer would be on both sides, according to this?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Right. And then, just out of curiosity, with this type of product, or, you know, if, if this is what it is, would security purposes, for security purposes, wouldn't it be beneficial to have it next to the building instead of away from the building? I, you can answer that, but that's just a thought came to my mind.
I don't, I don't know if, if that's a primary concern, security or not. The landscape buffer, lighting, a tall fence, I mean, that's, we're, the lot is so small, we're, we're not really talking about a huge distance anyway, so any building lighting is probably gonna be fairly visible, you know, over what's being stored back there.
So if you put a number to nearby, what would your number be?
I'm sorry?
If you put a number to nearby of feet away from the main building, what would that number be?
I, I really don't know, I mean, we've submitted a site plan with Daniel, I don't know if we can show it here or not, but it would be helpful.
It will be helpful, but you're, the, in the one that you submitted is attached, so it is attached. So that, that's what I'm saying, the one that you submitted is attached, I just didn't.
Yeah, part, part of it is, and it's, it's somewhat segregated, because part of the storage area that we've outlined is attached to the building. However, we had to carve it, a piece of it out for truck circulation and things of that nature. However, we had to carve it, a piece of it out for truck circulation and things of that nature. So the, the primary, um, storage area would be...
So let, let me tell you the difference, if I'm allowed, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the difference attached and detached, just think of this, okay? Think of a, a regular home, and, and attached garage versus a detached garage. So attached garage means that it just needs to be attached to a portion of the main dwelling, of the main dwelling. That's it, okay? So when we look at the term attached, means in the, in the ones that you have shown to me, i- it is attached, uh, the applicant, yes, it is attached. So i- i- it is attached to the building. However, if you wanna take some time and, and review the code and go over it, the one that I have is something from DRC, and I can tell you it's completely attached. So it's not that you have the building, then you have a wall se- completely separate, a different area is, is, is attached, if the area is attached to the building. Does that make sense, Planning Commission? If, I, I can bring the, the, the idea, but again, uh...
Well, it sounds like the drive area for the trucks and the storage are kind of all in the same lot, so that it, it's all in one piece. It's just they're using part of that as a driveline and...
Yes.
Unloading dock. So that mean, in, in my opinion, that's still attached, because it comes off the building. It's just some of it's being used as a driveline versus just storage. It's all the same purpose.
And so if that driveline would be the width of a truck?
Yeah, and then, and then be able to back up to the dock, so...
Yeah, width of a truck plus, you know, X amount of feet.
So you're, you're twenty feet wide and...
Yeah.
Whatever along the trucks are. I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it reads right now, I, and, and we can work with it if we need to.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public. All right, now seeing anybody come forward, we will close the public hearing and bring it back up here to the commissioners.
And if you go off the definition that Daniel said, even if a portion of that fence comes off the building, it's attached, so if it comes off any one side, it's still considered attached.
Doesn't have to be the whole wall.
I mean, a de- a, a attached garage can only be the width of a door. If they want to, and the whole rest of the garage can sit away from the house. So that's the same thought process here. It doesn't really mean it's all against the building, the storage.
Yeah. The other two parcels, I'm thinking about, you know, it's not just this parcel.
Yeah.
We're thinking about the other two parcels. And there's not a lot of land...
No.
There, to make it so that there's a lot of distance. So if, if it's like twenty feet, forty feet, fifty feet, there's not, I don't think there's that much distance.
Well, yeah, if they're gonna have any lay down area, they can't separate it that far. They lose it all.
Exactly.
So it's basically gonna be attached off the back of the building regardless. I mean, it might have a driveline again, but it's gonna be against the building, the way I see it.
I know I brought this up by wanting a definition of nearby, 'cause it was in the code, but what do we gain by limiting it to that way? I mean, if somebody put their storage yard in another corner of their lot, take Close to My Heart, for example. They tear down Close to My Heart, rebuild there, right? And they put their storage lot in the back corner, and they're building close to the road if they're allowed to. What are we gaining?
Well, that's true. It's all fence. It doesn't make any difference if it's touching the building or not. It's all...
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that we're losing anything from a design standpoint that makes it look worse. If it's all surrounded by a masonry fence and a, and a landscape buffer, whether it's attached or fifty feet away from the building, is it, are we gaining anything by putting that in there? I, I guess I'm struggling to understand the design.
What, what portion? Sorry, Commissioner, I was looking for the, for the images.
So if, if we just said the storage lot can be anywhere on their property, can't exceed twenty-five percent of the property, but anywhere on their property with the other, it's gotta be behind, or it's gotta be on the side lot, I don't, I don't know what we gain by saying it has to be attached.
Oh. Uh, I mean, when you, when you attach to something, at least you have one wall that is taller than ten feet. I mean, that's the wall of the building. And, and it's not just its own, it's not like a corral type of situation. So it's more like you, you, in this case, though, I'm gonna, we're waiting for the email, which is a heavy email. Okay, I'm gonna pull it out, and you guys can see the concept and, and, and see. Again, in this case, it is attached.
Yeah, I, I don't, I just don't think that it, I don't think it matters where that lot is, but the rest of the conditions that we have in there...
It's on the side or back, and so it's not in front, and those kind of things. I don't, don't see...
Like the example that you said, Todd, was, you know, Close to My Heart, they, you know, tear it all down, they build a building on the northwest corner, just to the very corner. And then, if, if it needs to be attached, I mean, that's, what do we gain from that? Because there's...
Uh, he- here it comes. Let me explain to you guys, and, uh...
The benefit is using the building as part of their fence.
Yes, it, it's...
And so it's cheaper for them to, to have it basically attached.
So, let's take a look at this. This is the, the, the storage area is what you guys have, what you guys have surrounded by this orange, orange line, okay? So this is it. So the gate is gonna be right here. So this is attached to the building, okay? In the, in another situation, for example, in the situation of a, a, a rectangle, but do you guys see how this, this is considered attached hundred percent, okay?
Yeah, if the fence comes into the building and...
Correct, this is completely attached. So it, uh, they're not doing, all this is part of the building, and then you go right there. In the case of something right here, and I'm gonna switch gears really quick. Let's say, right here, okay, someone can put a building right here, and then just put this top of a corral right there situation. That, that's gonna be the only di- difference, that you can do two, two rectangles right here, like one for the building, and then one for the storage, instead of being attached to.
And why is that bad?
Because at least in one, I have more than ten feet of a fence. I have the size of the building right there, which is...
That benefits the builder, but it...
No, it, it benefits the visual impact as well. It totally benefits the visual impact of it. So you're not seeing just a, 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 a corral and just a wall right there, but it's attached to the building. So from the perspective of planning, it does benefit the visual impact of having that situation. So you're not having like two different structures, which a, a wall that is ten, ten feet tall is kind of like a different structure. In this case, one of them is taller than ten by far, and it's just attached to it. At the end, it's just a, probably a, a subjective, also decide, pre- pre- preference, that's what I'm looking, preference.
But if they built two buildings on that lot, we wouldn't have any problem with that.
If we didn't have two buildings?
If, if they did?
Yeah, if they built two buildings on the same lot, it'd be the same as a building in a corral lot.
Yeah, but again, I, I mean, a building is different. I mean, you have, uh, you have doors, you have windows, you break the, the, the mass of a bi- of a, of a building. This is just a wall. It's just a wall. We don't have like a lot of, uh, standards for a wall. It's just a solid wall panel situation right there.
What do we think? I think leave it the same.
Sorry. To that point, Daniel, we have the condition in here that the designated outdoor storage area should be located in an enclosed side yard or backyard area. So I mean, if we... Would they have to enclose it all the way around if they built it separately? Is that what we're saying?
They have to enclose it.
Yes.
No, I, I'm saying like if they built it away from their building, we say it doesn't have to be attached. They built it away from it, it'd still have to be enclosed in something else, so if you're looking at it from the outside, you're looking at whatever they've used to enclose their area, and then that's behind it. Right?
Yeah.
Are you noodling it? You okay?
Yeah, I, I mean, I could go. Either way, I just think we shouldn't be restrictive where we don't have to be.
I don't think we should do it at all, so...
So would you amend number two then, to read that, with the designated outdoor storage area? And then take out that whole section about is attached to or nearby the main building, such outdoor storage area shall be in, but then it started up again, it...
I would just leave it.
Such outdoor storage area shall be enclosed. You would leave it?
Yeah, number two, 'cause then...
I'm drawing something, so you can help us. This is not attached? And I'm gonna do it right here. Give me one second, um... There you go. That's the difference with attached versus not attached. That's just kind of, kind of, kind of look. Like when it's not attached, you're gonna have some sort of like this. Now, can someone do this, for example? Uh, you know. And this will be considered also attached, which again, from the perspective of, of planning. My bad.
But remember, it can only be twenty-five percent, shall not exceed, so...
Of the lot, of the lot.
Of the lot, yeah.
This is about twenty-five percent of the lot. The lot comes all the way right here.
It looks like a third to me.
Do you, do you want, do you, do you wanna measure? 'Cause I, remember I do this for a living.
We trust you.
But we get your, the idea.
Sorry, I wanna do it like this. You see, this is better, polygon is better, okay? Now, this will be attached. I'm gonna make it like in a different way, so we can be like... There you go. So, do you see the difference between the red one and the yellow one? Both are about the same size.
I mean, I, I'd see a shape difference, but from a...
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, that's...
From a design standpoint, though, I mean, you're driving by, you're looking at essentially the same thing. 'Cause I get what you're saying. They're limited by the height of the building and stuff, but who's to say that the rest of that isn't a twenty-five percent?
If I, if I'm driving from here, sorry, I'm gonna see all this wall right here. If I'm driving from, and it's the yellow one, I'll see this one, and I won't see this one right there. That's the only difference. Now, again, whether it's a matter of preference, you guys decided how you guys wanna do it, but that's, that's the idea. You still, when you're driving from here, you won't see this wall right here. That's the only difference. You will still see this one from both, but you won't see this one.
You also see their beautiful building out front, too, right?
Which we, which we hope is beautiful.
And the way, and the way that we have it written on number six, there's also a landscape around it. So number six has, you know, mature trees, to the extent feasible, shall surround the outdoor storage, and so...
So if they detach that, put trees all the way around all four sides.
Yeah, which I, gotta look...
Agree, or whatever.
But I would require something like that, correct, yes.
But it already is, isn't it?
Uh, what was? There you go.
I move the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the request for Jory Walker.
Will Clark?
Sorry?
Will.
Oh, that's right, Will Clark. For a code text amendment to City Code Section ten dash twelve A dash three, design requirements to permit outdoor storage for retail uses in the business manufacturing park zone and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report, and is modified by the conditions below. I, I would just say that, uh, that all fire, um, engine, planning and engineering conditions, Matt.
Do we wanna make it as corrected?
I, I'm okay with as it is.
As is?
As it is.
Are we good with as is?
Are you talking about not even eliminating nearby and not?
You can say as it is shown on the screen, and we'll take that, and I'll, I'll show it right here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay without the, the omission.
What about the solid on the...
Oh, with the so, I do want the solid in there, yeah.
Were you okay without the omission of nearby?
As it is, Commissioner Phillips, like, like that?
Uh, I would eliminate the ore near, or, or...
Keep it.
Uneliminate the ore nearby.
So in this, in this case, it's eliminated?
I, I would uneliminate it.
Uneliminate?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, as it is.
And then add that.
And then keep the ore solid in there.
Okay. Well, that, that's the proposal, so... Sorry, that's the proposal, so you guys get to vote on it.
So that's a motion, a- as it's presented with...
There.
As it is there, yeah, the line's out now.
Second?
All right, we have a motion to approve with, as is seen on the screen, by Commissioner Phillips, and the co- second by Commissioner Butler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Do we need a roll count, or are we good? Just one, yeah. All right, well, that passes. And we will go on to item number five, which is a public hearing to consider the request of Jory Walker to amend City Code Section ten dash nine B dash nine, building height in the R-one single-family residential zone to permit it, to permit graduate setbacks for single-family residential structures. Daniel, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, um, let me save this one, the previous one, to make sure that we got it the right way. It's not that I'm not saving it, but I've gone twenty times on it. There we go. For this one, I'm actually gonna, uh, switch gears, I'm gonna open a new window, and I want us to have this in mind. What I'm gonna do is, gonna go to my best friend, Google. By the way, I measured it, Commissioner Carla, and I was off by, uh, five thousand square feet, to get it right there.
Well, then I was off a little, too, then.
By a little bit. We both were wrong. Like, you can't win. Okay.
And Daniel, that attachment is labeled R-one height proposed ETA Brandon view.
Thank you. Okay, there you go. Why am I showing that image? That image, I'm just showing it 'cause that gives us an idea of how you guys, when you guys are on the jog, and you guys are on your bicycles, or even driving, how do you guys see the plain view of a dwelling? Have you guys ever driven through, to that area? Look at those homes right there? 'Cause I sometimes I drive through there, look at them, and I go like, whoa, how are those homes meet the height requirement, right? Because the height requirement of a main dwelling is measured from, not from where I'm right here, or not from right here, but in this case, is measured from right here. Or right here. You guys can see how this kind of like grates down a little bit. So the height of a building is always measured from finished grade. Lot, Pleasant Grove City is a really nice city where we allow them to finish grade, okay? Most cities will tell you from original grade. Uh, I used to be the planner for Salley County, and I was the, in, in charge of the canyons, and, uh, in the canyons, you do a lot of modifications to the grading. So you have to present the plan how it was before and after, and then we measure from original grade, which you always present his, uh, difficulties. But in here in, in PG... Which you always present his, uh, difficulties, but in here in PG, we always measure from finished grade. So, in that case, I'll be measuring from right here, not from where this property was before the building was, 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 was installed, okay? So, again, what's the height of the maximum height of a building, uh, of a main dwelling in the, in the single residential zone is thirty-five feet, okay? In the case where there's a, a, a slope, what we do is we measure, uh, the highest point of the slope, the lowest point of the slope, not of the entire lot. But where the, where the, where the foundations, where the home, or the structure is touching. We measure highest, lowest, then we draw us at a straight line, we find the, the middle, and then, or the average, and from there, we go height. And that's how we measure the height of a building, okay? Uh, if we do it like that, we're gonna find out that probably a home will be, or a main dwelling, on one side will be taller than thirty-five. But automatically, in the other side, it needs to be shorter than thirty-five, to make sure that we can average the height. So, there are situations like that. However, um, thirty-five is the maximum. That's where we draw the line. So, a staff can only approve dwellings or structures that are up to thirty-five. I'm gonna say something that I usually don't say in public, but has a staff make, has, do a staff make mistakes? Unfortunately, we do sometimes. Have we probably approved something that it was taller than that? Yes. Have I been chastised for that? And I'm not saying personally, staff does that, or, but, yeah, it happens, right? However, right now, for example, I can give you a really good example of a home that is close by, no more than a mile away. That is in my downtown, uh, my, my downtown zone, and it's a home that is thirty-five feet right at the peak, right? But it goes out of character that I have on my table a couple of grammar requests. Of people saying, why is that home way too big? Okay, and I have to personally go right there with my inspector and measure, and, and, and it's sometimes kinda difficult to measure and make sure that it's thirty-five feet. But usually, when you're driving or when you're walking, and you see a structure that is, uh, out of normal, it immediately is gonna call for your attention, even if it meets the code. Now, when a structure is that big, it's not a matter of if the neighbors are gonna complain. It's a matter of when they're gonna complain. One of my biggest, um, articles that I follow, cases that I was following, is when I was at, at, at BYU, and, and, uh, I think it was my second to last semester. There was a, a, a situation with, uh, the MTC doing a building. And the building apparently was a little, a little too tall for the neighbors around, and of course, there was a lot of uproar and so many articles in how. People complained about being, blocking the view of the mountains, the view of the Y, the view of, I don't know how many things, so. It's not a matter of, of if the neighbors will complain, it's a matter of when they will complain, okay? So, now, we have made our best to make sure that every structure meets the code, and is a maximum thirty-five feet, okay? So, we have an application right now, we have an application to increase the maximum height, okay, to increase the maximum height. I'm gonna open up the application and the code that it was proposed by the, by the applicant, and what they are. Bringing to the table. Second one, right here, okay? So, I receive an application. Okay, now, let me show you, same thing that we would did with the previous one. I'm gonna show you how it's written and what the applicant is proposing. This language that you guys can see right there is what the applicant is proposing. I'm gonna show you what the code says right now. That's even a better one. That's what the applicant is proposing. I'm gonna do it like this, so we all can see it, and I'm gonna show you what the code says right now. So, when someone submits for a brand-new dwelling, first thing that Jacob does, he goes to. Chapter nine of our code, single-family residential zone, and then he goes into building height, ten-nine-B-nine. And there's these two paragraphs right here that talk about the height of a dwelling. Then, we also have definitions on how to measure height, but we're gonna focus on that part. So, not lot or parcel of land in the single-family zone shall have a main building or a structure used for dwelling or public assembly, which exceeds a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Chimneys, flagpoles, church towers, and similar structures not used for human occupancy. Okay? Are excluded in determining the height. You have a chimney that it pokes out of the thirty-five, and that's okay. If you have a steeple, then that's okay. You have an angel murana hanging on top of your home, that would be okay. But if it's part of the roof, that's not okay. Even if it's the air right there, that's, that's, that's not okay, okay? So, thirty-five is the maximum. And then, we jump into accessory structures, but at this point, I'm just gonna keep it right here, because in reality, everything that we have regarding the height of a dwelling is on those two lines, okay? So, what the applicant is proposing is to change the code and do it as follows. Not lot or parcel in an R one zone shall have a main building or a structure used for dwelling or public assembly that is, uh, ma- uh, taller than thirty-five. Except as provided in subsection B below. And then, they added a little bit at the bottom that says, the maximum height provided in subsection A can only be allowed if the proper yard requirements found in section ta-ta-ta of this article having been met. And then, this, this is the potato and meat, is that saying meat and potatoes of the ordinance? It says, lots or parcels of land in the single-family zone that have a gross acreage, uh, sorry, a gross aggregate minimum size of two and a half acres. Or more may have one main building or a structure used for dwelling or public assembly, which exceeds a maximum height of thirty-five feet. If, for every five feet or less that exists, exceeds the height of thirty-five feet. The front yard setback should be increased by an additional twenty feet. The front yard setback should be by additional twenty feet. Side yards by an additional ten feet, and rear yards by an additional twenty feet. In addition to all other yard requirements found in sections ta-ta-ta of this article having been met, chimneys, flagpoles, and, and stuff like that are still excluded. Okay? Well, first, even for me, reading that, I'm like, whoa, it's a lot of, this is a lot of language. Uh, in reality, what the applicant wants to do, and see if I can condense that into, into a couple of, uh, a couple of words is, let me see, because I wrote it down right here. What the applicant is proposing is saying, hey, thirty-five is the maximum, but. If someone owns a property that is at least two and a half acres. For every five feet of height allowed. He has to, uh, uh, propose or show twenty feet extra of a setback. That's it. For, for back and, and front. However, because it says right here from back and front. So, yeah, it says, uh, front yard, and then right here, uh, rear yards, yeah. Um, and it's saying for every, uh, five feet height that goes on the side yard, then the applicant needs to pro- uh, uh, prove, or provide ten extra feet. That's, that's what it's saying. Does, does that make sense? So, for example, in this case, or setbacks in the R one zone, for every R one zone are twenty-five feet on the front. Twenty-five feet on the back, ten, and ten. And the tallest the home can go is thirty-five feet, okay? But, the applicant is proposing, I can go to forty feet tall, to forty feet tall. And if I go to forty feet tall, then I need to provide on the front forty-five, and the back forty-five, and twenty, and twenty. That's what that ordinance is saying. However, the ordinance says, if I go to one hundred feet tall. I just need to make sure that I meet those requirements with it. So, there's not a limit on the height, okay? And it's going.
Skinny skyscraper would be okay.
In this case, yes. In this case, yes, okay? Uh, now, that's, that's how it is, okay? So, it's by increments, and it's saying, but you can go, for example, uh, thirty-five is the limit. So, if you go thirty-six, you still need to give me twenty extra. If you go thirty-seven, it's still twenty extra. If you go all the way to forty, it's still twenty extra, on the front and the back. But if, as long as you go, uh, all the way to forty, it's still twenty. But if you go forty-one, then you gotta give, uh, forty extra, okay? So, that's how, that's how the applicant is proposing it. I, that's the idea behind. Personally, I will change the code to make it simple, and I don't give a headache to my city planner, or whoever comes after us, and make it in an easier language, okay, personally? Now, here's the, he, the, the idea, that's what the idea, what the applicant is proposing. As you guys know, we usually take this language, massage it a little bit, take a look into it, see, okay, how can we do it? And there's two points that I wanna touch from the perspective of a staff, okay? That language, as it is written right there, that's exactly what the applicant is proposing, okay? I'm gonna show you what a staff work and what a staff came out with, okay? I'm gonna show you now how we, what we did right there. First of all. Is that a word in English? Do we say first of all? First of all?
First of all.
First of, okay, first of all.
No, it's, it's three words.
First able?
First of all.
Oh, first of all, so it's not first A-V-L-E, it's not like, that's, yeah, I learned something new today. First of all, thank you so much. First of all. I think the staff thinks that there should be a limit on the height, no matter what. So, what we did, I went to different city codes from different cities, okay? And if you guys open your staff reports, you're gonna find that right there, and I'm gonna show you guys a table, okay? I know Pleasant Grove, we are pioneers in doing amazing things. Exceeding the height of a dwelling is not of the ones that I get too excited about it. But I'm gonna show you guys the staff report right here. Okay, perfect. And I'm gonna show you guys the table. Right there, okay? The maximum height of Linden, thirty-five feet, exactly what we have in PG. No considerations, thirty-five, that's it. That's how we have it right now. Orem, Orem has thirty-five feet, except single-family residence, residences in the R one, in the R twelve, or the R one-twenty. So, they were specific to zones, okay? They're not saying every single, single family, but on R one-twelve and R one-twenty, they go up to forty-five feet. So, long as all parts of the structure that is six thirty-five feet should be located at least fifty feet from all property lines. So, they have their own regulations, how they thought it was gonna be good. So, but the maximum, again, is, uh, uh, forty-five feet. That's the maximum they can go. Then probo, probo is interesting, thirty-five feet, except that the front elevation shall not exceed thirty feet. That means that if, or you're walking, and you see the front of the house will be thirty, and maybe on the kitchen, or I don't know what will be the bedrooms in the back, that can go a little high. So, that one can exceed. Other than that, it needs to be thirty feet. American Fork, I don't know where they come up with that number, thirty-six feet. Thirty-six feet, they, they, they say thirty-six feet. Except that the building inspector, quite on the building inspector, that's a lot of, I will, don't recommend to put that on a building inspector. Except that the building inspector may approve a dwelling having a greater maximum height to a ratio of one foot increase or higher. I mean, that's the building inspector. I don't know how the building inspector will do that. By the time the building inspector shows up. Everything is already built. Everything is already built, but that's how American Fork works. Should say the building reviewer, or the, the building reviewer more than the building inspector. Saratoga Springs, Saratoga Springs, thirty-five feet. Except multifamily and mixed residential uses, those might, might be forty, forty feet, okay? Cedar Hills, thirty-five feet. So, based on that, and surrounding cities, the tallest a structure can be is forty-five feet. That's the tallest one, okay? Again, Cedar Hills can go to, I'm sorry, Saratoga to forty, and, and probo a little bit, and, and stuff like that, but the maximum is, is, is forty-five, okay? Now, based on, on that, this is what staff is proposing, okay? Staff is proposing. To do it like this, and, and again, this is the proposal of a staff, and he makes it simple for us to apply, and let's take a look at this. So, we keep the same, the, the, the first paragraph the same, except that I put right here similar architectural structures. Because someone said, well, I'm gonna design a chimney that, that happened, that happened to me, so I'm gonna decide a chimney as on a square, instead of like a rectangle up as on a square. It's just the design, but it was gonna be the roof of a house. So, that's why I'm putting right there, and similar architectural structures. Um, anyway. This is the portion that staff is proposing. Main residential buildings locate, located in illegally subdivided lots, lots that are part of a subdivision, with a minimum area of two-point-five acres. Okay? May exceed the maximum height of thirty-five feet to a limit of forty-five feet. So, we're putting a limit right there. If all the following conditions are met. For every foot of height exceeding thirty-five feet, up to a maximum of forty-five feet, the rear setback should be increased by five feet. Meaning that if you go thirty-five, your setback is twenty-five. If you go thirty-six, then add five feet. Thirty-seven, add five feet. Thirty-eight, I, I, add five feet. And for every foot of height, you gotta increase the, the, the run, or the setback, by five feet. You do it like that on the, on the rear setback, and you do it like that on the, uh, on the front and on the rear. And on the side, for every foot, then you gotta add, uh, three feet, all right? So. I was sitting with Jacob a couple of weeks ago, and we were trying to figure out what the main issues are, or what people comment and complain about. And I think the, the main one are block of a view. Block of air and space, which I don't know how to measure that. And, well, a block of the sun, because, you know, some people have crops or whatever, and then they block the sun. And also, when a structure is outside, the, it's different than the rest of them. When you have homes that are twenty, twenty-five, thirty-five, and boom, suddenly you have something like, that, that sticks out of the norm, okay? By, definitely, I think the applicant and the staff, by adding setbacks, completely hundred percent. Reduces those problems, or at least they should be reduced on the, on the mind of, uh, of, of, uh, pedestrian, however, or, or a resident, or a neighbor. Um, let's take a look at something that I, I was drawing this with, uh, with Jacob. And we were sitting down, and we were, we were trying to figure this out. And I asked Jacob, how good are you with math, Jacob? Let's calculate. Let's come up with a factor, let's come up with a factor that will, um, help us quantify a problem like this. And what we did is. Take a look at this, this, these dwellings, okay? These are gonna be the fronts, and these are gonna be the ba- uh, sorry, the front, back, and back, all right? So, what we did is. We measured, for example, twenty-five feet is my backyard, twenty-five feet. So, in reality, there should be at least fifty feet of clear space. And between properties, there should be at least twenty feet, correct? At least twenty feet. So, again, by staggering the setbacks, saying you go high, but then you push a little bit, and it, it, it helps with that problem. Because in real, this is a problem of, uh, of a sideline, of a rise overrun. Okay, so that's what we did. We went, okay, let's, let's calculate, what's the, the factor, or how do we do it? Right now, this home is allowed to be thirty-five feet, and this home is allowed to be thirty-five feet. If you wake up in the morning, exit your backyard, stand up right here on the edge of your home, and look at that one, okay? By fifty feet, because that'll be the distance that should be, at a thirty-five feet. Is point seven. Meaning that for every foot of distance, there's gonna be point seven of a height. So, we did a rise, rise overrun. So, that's the factor that we have. In this case, in this case, on what the applicant is proposing, even what the applicant is proposing, and what the staff is proposing. The factor is way less than point seven, meaning that is less intrusive. Both, both ideas, by do, doing these chunks of five feet, so, there should not be. Uh, the, the blocking of the view, i- i- it should not be affected that much, because then you're pushing the structure a little bit more. However, however, it's only if you put a limit, a limit on it. Because if you can go as high as you can, that's what happened with the MTC, that's gonna be a tower, that, that doesn't apply in this case. But if we put a limit, going from thirty-five to forty-five, or to fifty, or whatever the limit is, that, we consider that there should be a limit right there, okay? That's what the situation is. So, we, we calculated, we calculated the factors, the fact, some of the factors are already on your staff reports, how we did it. Uh, when you do it for the side yards, from here to here, let's say you walk here, and you're looking at that. Uh, right now is one-point-seventy-five. uh, right now is one point seventy-five, meaning that for every foot of distance, there's one point seventy-five of, of height, okay? Again, both, what the applicant is proposing, and what the staff is proposing, in both cases, is less than, than, than these numbers that you have right here, okay? So that's what I have, um, applicant, and, sorry, well, the applicant is behind me, but a chair and commissioners. If you guys have any questions, we'll be happy to jump into it, yes.
Is there a single house in Pleasant Grove that's taller than thirty-five feet?
Not that it was leak, uh, not that it was approved in full conscience. But maybe there's a couple of them, yeah, for sure, for sure, there's always, there's always things like that. There's homes that were built ten years ago that I don't even know how they go, they go built. There are some homes, for example, that obtain variances, um, but yes, it's, uh, quantify them, I don't have them.
It's not the standard, though.
Um, no, 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 no. So, uh, let me, let me, let me say this in a better way. If there are, they either receive a variance, or was a staff mistake.
What about the new irrigation, uh, with lots and grass and front yards and all that? It's gonna affect this drastically, you get a forty-foot front yard, and they can only have a certain percentage of that under landscaping, that's gonna...
That didn't pass by the city council, go reject it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, funny enough, and I'm not gonna digress from it, but now the state came back and said, you guys gotta put it, so, and now, now we have to do it before December. And we're not gonna jump into that right now, because at this point, it, it got denied, so, we, we didn't adopt that, that code.
Okay, I just curious, because that's gonna make a lot of difference in the way it's our landscape, and if you're going to want to, because the difficulty and...
Your setback is gonna be way more, yes, correct. At this point, it's not, it's not part of the code.
I, this is getting maybe too detailed, how tall was the person when you were calculating the ratio on your...
No, from, yeah, it's, 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 no, you're right, you're right, because it's important. So, we put the person right here, but when we calculate the ratio, we calculate the ratio from the ground, pretty much, but...
Right, because that person's like twenty feet tall. Those are thirty-five foot homes.
But if you go a six feet tall, for example, I'm six feet tall, we, we tried to take that into consideration, but some people are gonna be six feet tall, so we're gonna, so while we're doing it, and actually, we gotta change this line then, because the line goes from right here, Jake.
I, I was gonna say, because that does change the pitch there, as you're talking about sightlines, because
Correct.
that makes sense as to why we're going...
This drawing is incorrect, the line is from here to right here.
To the ground.
To the ground, to the ground, because then, then it goes depending on the height.
I was gonna say, because that line is a...
It takes the objectivity out.
As you can see, Jacob did this earlier today, and I don't think he, he thought I put that to consideration, but yeah. It's, it's, it's from, uh, from ground level to the peak.
So, Jerry. How did you guys come up with five feet then, for every foot?
For every foot, because it was, uh, um, we, we tried different, different numbers, tried different numbers. When, when I look at what the applicant was proposing, and I, because he's going for chunks, right? But when I like, um, put it into one, into standards of just one, it was one by four, one per four, meaning that for height, sorry, one foot of height for every four feet of distance, because they go all the way to twenty immediately.
If it was the maximum.
If it was, yeah, if it was, so I just tried to round that out to an easier number from four, then I went to, to five, which I always round up to the more restrictive number, correct, to the most restrictive number. That's how I come up to it. So the applicant was proposing pretty much one, one of height for every four of setback. So I just went to the closest number, and that it was around this, it would be five, yeah.
Compared to American Fork, that's a pretty significant difference, they were...
Yeah, one for two.
One to two, yeah.
I personally think that regardless of what numbers we do, the type of language that staff is proposing, it's easier to understand and easier to apply.
Agreed.
And now, I think it's a matter of whether we decide to submit a recommendation of approval uh, on, on the, on the ratios, or not at all. So I think that's what the conversation should be, and probably we need more time to put it into a better language, or stuff like that, or if you guys agree with that, we'll, we'll fly with that, okay? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, if the applicant is here, and you'd like to come forward.
My name is Drew Walker. My address is one three four five nine South Fort Kennedy East in Draper, Utah. I'm the principal architect for Beecher Walker Architects.
And I'm Drew Armstrong, and, um, we...
Make sure you speak in the microphone, sorry.
The reason I'm up here is because when, uh, the real applicant, the person who is trying to get something done here, um, who's Brandon Fugel, is a good friend of mine, and, um, when he went and did the, the attempt last time for a variance, I just shook my head the whole time, and said, this is not the way to do this. And so I called him up after the fact, and I said, Brandon, there's a right way to do this, and there's a wrong way to do this. And I said, for our community, um, you know, I mean, I'm a big proponent of, of property rights, personal pro, private property rights, but I'm also very cognizant of the fact that the, uh, the neighbors need to be able to have that quiet enjoyment at the same time, and, and um, I think that the hearing that we had, I was pretty frustrated with the fact that people are, are complaining about sightlines, when, um, what he was proposing with the size of the lot, and where the house is gonna be sited on the lot, would be far less than a normal subdivision. And, uh, there are not a lot of lots that this would even apply to, but there, I, I sold one to, uh, a client who, um, bought one that actually was gonna go into a subdivision um, here in Pleasant Grove, and they bought the whole five acres, and they wanna build one house on it. And, and, uh, it's a, a similar situation. They bought it last fall, shut the subdivision down, and they're just gonna keep it and build one house on it. And I'm like, you know, those type of lots with that type of setback, you're going to be in a, uh, you're gonna build a home in a position where it is not gonna be so impactful for the neighbors. And, um, and I, I was a little upset that people were talking about helipads and all this kind of stuff, because that's just, they made it up. And, uh, and I, I don't think that was a lot of public outcry over stuff that's not real. And, um, so we, we came up with something, and, um, the language is something that I sorta came up with, and I'm not a code writer guy, so I, I have sat down with, um, with our planning staff, and, uh, and I said, hey, you know, if, if you think mine's awkward, go ahead and address it. I don't think we have any problem with what they've done.
I think it's really great, I just think I just need to understand. Um, so I, um, I went to school to get a degree in sculpture, I got a degree in sculpture, a bachelor's in architecture, a master's in architecture, and I have made reputation doing historically correct homes all over Holiday, the avenues, and that's kinda where I've made my, my bang in life, I guess. And what I was asked to do was create a historically correct home that Brandon wanted to have, that would be, that would look like it was built in the eighteen fifties, eighteen forties. And in order to do that, the roof pitches are gonna be a sixteen twelve, at eighteen twelve, um, to make it feel proper and feel correct. And so as, as I designed the home, and as we worked with Brandon on it, 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 there was nothing about height, or trying to push the height, or trying to make the home taller, it was like, this is what is proper for this style, to be the proper, to look at the home and say, this home was, was designed properly. Um, I, I, as an architect, I get so frustrated when I see these Disneyland homes, where they've tried to create something historically correct, and it's a farce of what it should be. And to Brandon's credit, he's like, I will not build this home unless it's correctly proportioned historically the way it should be. And I said, Brandon, I could pull the roof down, I can get you permit tomorrow. He says, I, I want to make sure that what I'm building is historically and feels correct, and feels like it should feel. And if you've seen the renderings of the home, it's incredibly beautiful, and it's gonna be a great addition to the city. And so I told Brandon, I'm going to fight the battle with you, and, and go through this with you, because I really think the home is correct, the way it's designed. We could always pull the roof off and chop it off at thirty-five feet, but it would look funny, it would look pretend and fake.
And, and not that we're specifically talking just about Brandon's, because when you do a code text amendment, we're, we wanna apply it in a way that will fit our community and protect neighbors all over the place. If they end up with somebody that wants to build something that's taller, they need to have a lot size that will accommodate that without creating a problem for the neighbors.
In Holiday, in Salt Lake, you have estate zones. And estate zones, it's a lot, a lot that's two point five acres or more, with that lot, you're allowed more height, more coverage, and, and those kind of things. And since, as we're branching out, and the city's growing, Pleasant Grove is kinda getting into that next mix, but other cities that are, that have estate zones, they have the same kind of ordinance, where you get more height, the more setback you get, because the further you pull back, the more the setback is, the more there's less, less impact on the neighbor's lot.
Yeah.
And so, I'm used to this, because I do a lot of it in Salt Lake and Holiday, I've not done a lot in Pleasant Grove. I did build Brandon's house previously here in Pleasant Grove, and it is forty-five feet tall.
Do you know where his old house is? It's, it's up in, uh, the, what is it called, Cover Bridge, the, up beyond the...
And it, it got built, and nothing was ever said, and none of us said anything, so when we did this house, I was like, ah, we're fine, Brandon, we're cool, we did your other house, we're good, and all of a sudden, we're like, oh, we're right back with Daniel, and he's like, oh dude, you got problems, like, oh, really? So, we're just hoping we can...
I, like, I got a variance for my house on Center Street to build a garage, because it was too close. Uh, the one that I, I've sold, that was up on nine ninety-five East Center, um, because I had frontage on two sides. And the process at the time, and this is back in two thousand and four, I think, and at the time, you know, you, you show up and, and you talk to the, um, Board of Adjustments, and, uh, and they're just guys in the neighborhood, and they're like, this is never gonna happen to anybody else again, and they're, all the staff said no, and the Board of Adjustments for me said, yeah, you have no problem, that's why it's a quasi-governmental thing, and we've switched to where we don't have a Board of Adjustments. I'm glad that they did that for me, but it was kind of arbitrary at that point. Now, after having sat up there with you guys, you know, you realize, okay, we gotta, we gotta do this in a way that applies to the whole city.
And that's why we came with this, this kind of way, because that way, we set an earnest that helps your city if there's other big lots, where there are people can build homes that are appropriate for a bigger lot. That's why we're doing this, but we appreciate your help, and we can answer any questions for you at all, but that's kinda why we're here.
Only question I have, forty-five feet maximum, is that perfectly fine?
It doesn't bother us.
Doesn't bother us, you know, we're, it's right there, I, um, it's so funny, I sat with Brandon, I'm like, Brandon, I can pull ten feet off. And he was just adamant, because he's, it says, it won't be correct, it won't be proper. And I'm like, I get it, and so, that's why we're here. But it's, it's gonna be beautiful.
I, I, I mean, I, I absolutely see what the staff is saying, you know, we, we're not a hundred foot tall. Even if it's out in the middle of a fifteen acre field, you don't want a skyscraper, so.
It, it makes sense to limit it, but that's kinda where we came up with this idea.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, and this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public, but not seeing, seeing anybody, we'll close it, and bring it back up to the commissioners for motion or discussion.
This is really just for one person.
We don't have that many lots left.
Anyone else that wants to build?
Anybody that has a lot big enough.
And so obviously, there's another person that's around.
In the future, right?
Yeah, in the future, so it affects the whole...
How many five acre lots? Or two and a half acre lots?
There's, there's a lot if you get up in the north end.
North end.
There's a lot of farm country up there that's gonna be going under.
Some rural residential area, yeah.
Twenty-six hundred north and...
Yeah, so how many?
A hundred, potentially.
A hundred, two point five acre lots?
I don't know.
But even so, the same principle would apply, whether it's a hundred or a thousand, the setbacks, the constriction on, on how far back off the property lines would be.
I mean, the, the challenge is, we're landlocked, we only have so much land, and it's a finite resource for us, so. And so you wanna build a whole bunch of great big houses on great big lots?
And if it's, you know, in consideration for the, the neighbors and stuff, they are quite a ways away from the home. The sightlines are really pushed back from the homes, from neighbors.
I know in my house, there's gonna be a lot of pushback, because I've got teenage kids that, or young adult children that wanna get out, and there's not affordable housing in this, and they look at a big mansion like that going up, and they will immediately say, why did you approve it?
Well, but we didn't, that property owner can subdivide it, or build one house.
Yeah.
I mean...
As I said, there's not much difference between that and what we just approved to combine those two lots into one, that's not an affordable lot anymore.
No, it's not, it's the same thing. I agree. I don't have any problems with that.
I don't either.
I don't either.
As the staff wrote it.
And commissioners, uh, sorry, I haven't flagged this through our legal department, so, I, if you put that as a, as a part of a condition, this is one that I haven't, uh, she hasn't reviewed this yet.
It has to pass the legal department, and all fire department, and everybody else.
Because then, usually she, if there's mixed changes, that she makes in language and legal matters and stuff like that, then it won't be exactly the same language before we bring it to city council. And I need to make sure that we understand also that we're putting a cap, we're not just going as tall as possible, we put a cap of forty-five feet, okay?
It's forty-five, which matches several of the others.
The, the tallest any other city will allow, one city, okay.
I have a question, it might be, doesn't matter, but what if, in where I am, where my house is, um, there's four houses that are half acre, almost acre, acres right now, and they are designated our, um, farmland? What if, um, an applicant came and said, well, I bought all these four right in the middle by the cemetery, and I'm gonna build this huge house?
They could.
Well, they'd have to buy five.
As long as it's two and a half, but right in the middle of all these houses that are already there.
No, because if you read that right there, it says, in a legally subdivided lot, so they will need to, say someone buys
They'd have to combine them.
They have to, uh, consolidate them, make it into one.
Yeah.
Then demo all the house, and build one.
And be one house, but if that was done...
Yeah.
If you have a hundred million, Brandon, you can do that.
Exactly, and they could still do that through all those proper channels, and still just do thirty-five, I mean, as of today. As of today, but if we change it, then they could do whatever they want, and everybody's...
They can do whatever they want, they can go up to forty-five feet, which isn't changing your sightline. The alternative is having houses closer to your lot, that are, that are thirty-five feet tall, that are more obstructive to your sightline.
So just, just to make sure, I, I need to understand the question, Commissioner Nelson, Nelson? So what we're saying is, you're in a single-family zone, correct? So you can only build, no, that's what we're saying right there, and say, you, you can only build one dwelling per lot, okay? One dwelling per lot. So you need to have a lot that is at least two and a half, okay, two and a half. Now, let's say, your neighbors buy, it's gonna be more than four of them, it's gonna have to be A lots, correct? And, and in the zone where you live, to be, be able to have two and a half acres. So it's gonna be two and a half acres, huge land. Right now, they can go, in those two and a half acres, twenty-five feet from the property line, and thirty-five tall. They can do that legally, okay? So what we're saying with this code is, since it's a big state, it's a big piece of land, you can build a taller home if you want, but then you're not gonna give me those at twenty-five feet from setback, thirty-five feet. Now, you're gonna have to go probably a fifty or sixty from the, from the, from the sidewalk, or from the property line, and then you can go only ten feet taller than that. That, that's what we're saying. But that doesn't mean that, for example, someone buys four homes, and then they built a fifth one right there. That, that will never happen. You have to demo the other four homes.
Yeah.
And then build one, but yes, they can do that, correct, they can do that, yes. But not at twenty-five feet of, of distance, of distance from your property line. Now, it will have to be probably a fifty, or it will have to be a fifty-five setback, so it has to be way farther from you to go ten feet taller. Remember, for every foot taller that they go, they need to go five feet away. So just to do the, the math...
So it'd be seventy-five on, on the front and back.
To be a setback of seventy-five feet.
Okay. Okay.
So that's pretty much bigger than the house where I live right now. The setback will be way more.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion. I mean, the Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of the request of Drory Walker, right? That's, yeah. Um, of Drory Walker for a code text amendment to City Code Section ten dash nine B dash nine, building height, to permit an increase in height for single-family residential structures with the respective graduated setback, and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report, and is modified by the condition that the adopted language is subject to review by the city attorney, and any material changes should be brought back to us for approval.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Fugel, and a second from Commissioner Phillips. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
I oppose.
All right, one oppose, but it passes. All right, let's, for those of you...
Give me one second, do you get that, Christina? Yeah, so out of seven, we go six, six ayes, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And one, yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, um, for those of you who are, I hope you had a minute to review the minutes of May ninth, I will take a motion to approve those. Or any additions, corrections?
I'm gonna have to approve the minutes for May ninth? All right, I make a motion, yeah.
Sorry, did someone second that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the May ninth minutes from Commissioner Fugel, and a second from Commissioner Butler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
I'm just gonna abstain, I wasn't here.
All right, well, that passes as well. All right, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.